I'd like to call the town act and planning board meeting to order on Thursday, July 7th at 6:00 PM. I'll stay in for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What it changes me to know.
Now I had a note here, we were supposed to change the new plan draft to final.
They should be all done.
Last meeting.
No, they were.
You tabled them last meeting?
Yeah.
Well, you made this change, traffic.
I just missed it then, that's my fault.
And then there's one here says the new plan, we wanted that changed to final.
Okay.
Instead of a new plan.
That's.
And I had one more note on the back about.
She wasn't here, it was me, this is my fault.
Planning board see following plans, contract agreement.
Hazardous waste.
Hazardous waste.
Can I just see that for a second?
The notes I.
May 19.
You can sort of remember that.
Yeah, I remember it now too, I just, that's my fault, from not.
What do you do?
You can take that. Yeah, can I just have this?
All right.
I'll make the corrections and then.
If you want, just keep those tables now.
So we don't have to bring it up because it ain't ready?
Yeah, and then we can just accept them when they come back to us.
Right.
You are just.
We'll just get deep table, we don't want to bring them up.
Okay. Well, I'll make the changes, you don't have to table them, just. But you can do whatever you want.
Well, that's the only copy out of this.
Yeah.
Good, Pat, you don't have your minutes from May 19?
Probably do.
Do you want the copy that we made the corrections on before?
Yeah.
Everybody have a copy of this?
Yes.
Why she just didn't ask you? All right, so we're gonna fix these, and I'll give them back to them next week.
Yeah, well, just hold on then.
Yep, that's my bad, I'm sorry.
All right, did everybody get a chance to review the last meeting?
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from June 16th.
A second. A second.
All in favor? All opposed? All right, we'll move on to old business, act, uh, echo on storage, Pat Stevens, 780 Milton Mills Road, 240-014, site plan.
Hello, Pat Stevens. Proposed mini storage buildings on Milton Mills Road.
So you just changed the size of the?
Yep, we downsized the building.
And that's pretty much all that's changed on this?
Yes.
The other thing, Jason, quick, is we decided to propose a little bit of boat storage out behind the building, like the grass area. Give the opportunity to store boats or trailers or that sort of thing there as well.
How much room are you gonna have between the building and the proposed boat storage?
Uh, it'd be like a, probably thirty, forty foot gravelled area around the building.
And then the boats will be off the gravel area?
Yep.
Are you gonna have a fence? I forgot.
No.
About how many boats are you thinking? I mean, it's hard to guess.
Yeah, it's hard to guess, it might be just trailers.
How many could you accommodate there, you think? Reasonably?
Uh, I haven't really done the calculations on, you know, how much parking area, you know, it would be, but.
I'm just looking at the land use chart for boat yards. Yeah, just wondering if it'll be, you know, sizable enough to be considered a boat yard or not.
If there's a particular square footage there Gavin, it's a trigger, we would probably should just say under it.
I don't, yeah, I don't know.
His main course of business here, he just.
Right, maybe we could come up with a side for you, but I, does everybody see a H17 boat yard?
Nonshorefront.
Right, nonshorefront.
It's not permitted.
That's what it says, yeah.
But can you consider it a boat yard if it's just storage, you're not doing sales, service, or repair? It is a storage, so just storing a boat.
I thought we have a definition there.
I'm looking at it right now.
Boat yard. Operational operation for sales, service, repair, and storage for all types of water grounds.
But this is a, what I'm looking at is storage yard, he's just storing, what's the difference between someone storing a boat or their camper?
Um, probably their own.
Well, there's fuel on a camper?
Yeah.
Motorhomes. People store their cars, that storage, you got lots too, there's fuel in those.
I was remembering when we did the other boat yard.
Right. But he was also proposing detailing. At another, it was also.
Wrapping.
Yeah, and wrapping, he was actually a boat yard, this is, I'm looking at this as more of a storage.
Right, well, we'd have to get notes that told us that it wasn't, you know.
Yeah, I'm just not looking at it as a boat yard, I'm looking at it as more storage, storing boats.
Well, it looks like two uses on one lot to me, which I don't have a problem with it, but.
Right. No, I see where you're coming from, I'm.
Yeah, right. Um, I just, I wanted to ask you about the note on, for the existing driveway, it says existing entrance to be abandoned, I was hoping maybe we could get some, some little bit of revegetation on that thing.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Yes.
Waiting to get the approval, so we can put the new driveway in.
Right, of course you're using it right now.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, you think you'll spread some loam on that?
Yep.
All right, well, maybe we should just get the, get this note here to, maybe existing entrance to be revegetated, or stabilized, or because, you know, I go by there and occasionally there is sand come down on the road and like a little bit of a wash in the middle of that thing.
Yep.
Not all the time, but it does move around a little bit.
No, I don't have a problem with that.
That's why you had the boat in there for a while, so you could get out when the flood.
Waiting for the flood.
Put an arc.
There you go, existing use.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, you already had one sorted.
Yeah.
I think most of what we do tonight is just set a sidewalk, right?
Yeah, sounds like, sounds good to me.
Can we do before the next meeting?
You can do the sidewalks before, yeah.
I think all we need is ten days, right?
Well, not even for the sidewalks, that's for public hearings. That's what I've come down to, sidewalks are different than public.
We just need time to do the mailing out for the neighbors, right?
Now, this being a conditional use permit versus a site plan when we started, does that still require a public hearing at some point?
I do believe a conditional use still does get a, get a public hearing.
Just that's good, just seeing you guys are comfortable that we're ready for that as well.
So sooner we get a sidewalk than.
Today's the 7th, so it'd be the.
Yeah, review procedures, uh, public hearing, review procedure and public hearing at five.
Conditional use. Yeah, it's gonna be a regular thing.
It's easier to remember anyway.
Yeah, works for me, I don't have to scare it around.
I was reading, sorry.
Uh, 21st at five.
Yeah, that's fine.
How's that look for you?
Oh, that's fine.
We schedule a public.
Yeah, I think we can schedule a public hearing that night too.
Throughout ten days?
Oh, I think we're supposed to review the conditions and make sure that it's, the application is complete, we have to vote that the application is complete before you schedule.
Right, that's why we had, on the bridge.
Yeah. But we could probably do it that night, on the 21st, we would probably schedule the hearing.
Right. Be for the 4th. Would be the next closest date after the 21st.
You want one night?
No, well, we can.
Yeah, we just had something being regional in here and he, he was kind of, yeah, so he didn't like that.
So we'll have you see on the 21st at five.
Yep, on the lot.
Yeah.
Yep. Sounds good to me.
So we'll have four corners roughly of the building laid out, the entrance is marked to where DFC approved it, is anything else you guys like to see marked out for that sidewalk?
Maybe where you can stop the buffer in between the building and where the boats are gonna be.
Yeah, just approximately where that area is.
That way, if there's enough room for like, say a fire truck to turn around back there and stuff like that.
True.
For obvious reasons.
Yeah. Sounds good.
I know, but it's.
We're talking about your hours.
We would partially determine how many boats.
Just daylight hours.
I need daylight.
Yeah.
Usually we'll have. Want to get that, Joe?
Yeah, we'll let that, and the event season, Gavin asked about.
Anything else Gavin, one of the notes, he's just gonna operate like daylight hours in here.
Oh.
What about summertime, no, daylight's longer in the summer.
Oh, it just says daylight hours?
Well, no, he just wants daylight hours operation, but if it's summertime. Don't go down till nine.
He'll have to sit down and, a lot of people will down and move, we'll have that note on the plan in our meeting before it.
Okay.
Yeah, I think some of those places are open 24 hours a day, aren't they?
Yes, some are.
Yeah, some, but I'm not looking for that.
Yeah.
The other one came in, we, on, hurt facility there.
Yep.
Put a time on that.
Right.
Because it's residential, you got residential houses right across the street from where he, same.
Both of them have neighbors, there's not, Pat doesn't have a lot of neighbors though.
No.
Right now, but ten years down the line.
Well, he's gonna have a neighbor seven and things over there.
Yeah, there's still a buffer.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pretty well buffered there, between this wetland and the road.
Yep.
Ready for me for tomorrow.
Sunup, sundown, not to exceed 8pm. You'll work on that.
Right.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Yeah, I think that's all we have for Pat today, right?
Yep.
Yeah, we'll do the sidewalk and then we'll get into it more.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, next up is John, Hall Azadi.
It's July 21st of last year.
104 Jericho Way, lot 109-4043, conditional use permit, bridge and water crossing.
That's what I was wondering, have you, did you give it to him?
No, I don't think they ever come forward to, right?
Yeah, it's a kind of a weird. Jason, any computer skills?
What's that? I can go back to not using the computer, make my life easier.
I appreciate it.
They're better than mine, so.
I just like how that stream goes right through the house.
Yeah.
It's always a good one. Oops. So touchy.
Can you, can you get the topo map on there?
We just had terrain, topo.
No, it's.
You just barely can see it, it doesn't really give you much of anything either.
It's about twenty feet.
Where you're looking.
Twenty foot contours or?
Six twenty-five, uh, well, this point. Over here is six sixty-five and this is six forty down here on this one.
And that's not really showing us very much, is it?
No.
I was just wondering if, what the terrain told us about the, the two different flowages on there, which one, you know, because you would assume would be in the bottom of the valley, so to speak, but.
Is that one better?
No, it's different.
Well, I'm hoping it zooms in a little bit better. I guess not. Appears to be one single flow, I think it's just, the map must be an error.
Jason, do you have a copy of the letter from the Beach Association? I don't know if I, um, I don't know if I need one, I just.
I did have one, I don't have it on my, I had it on a flash drive, I think I just gotta run down and grab it.
Yeah, and it's more just verifying it exists, I guess.
Yeah. I do have verification from, from the Rogers Brook Association, they had a meeting, when was it?
29th.
Yeah.
To grant permission to.
Yeah.
It's critical role, yeah.
What's he have, talk about the coral up there?
No, it's too.
Yes, and it's the whole thing, yeah. Oh, it's weird.
It's ruled, the bright green is the resource protection. Good, that bright green right here is all resource protection around the Great Lake. Yeah, so, let me show you in two seconds.
Wait, wait, it's, it's gonna be a second.
Because, this thing just says it's rural.
Right, I think he's got more detail.
He's in the regular rural.
See, I took off zoning, so now the rule's gone, that critical, this is, slows wetlands two or more acres. I think is where, yeah.
Wetlands two or more acres, that's what it is.
Yeah, see, it just disappeared, now I clicked it back on. It's all that peat moss that's out there. I do have the updated survey.
That's what he said, it says for a.
I know, but I don't, I don't think zoning is, I don't, yeah, that's not what this one says.
It's still conditional use in the resource protection. I'm just, no, I'm looking at it right now.
Where are you?
On the land use chart, so if you were gonna say that, because this is, each a resource protection district, because it's right there, in the land use chart, it still says it's conditional use.
Yeah, 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 it's pretty much the same as shore zone, it's only a situation, I think, but it it's good to point that out.
So Gavin, he had the survey company do your shoreline overlay on this right here.
Oh, yeah, we should be looking at that thing.
You'd like to look at?
Yeah, because it only gets so far.
No, this is not accurate, this is just a.
You wanna share that one? Yeah, that's fine, otherwise we're gonna have too much paper. Yeah.
Here's the community beach.
Here's the brook right here. There's a lake.
He's calling the inlet. What did we find?
Yeah, but it's tied, so to speak.
And he's saying the lake starts here and that's.
Well, I don't know, yeah. Where is the, is the bridge on here?
The board just on here.
Right.
I've got the deeds to the, to abiding properties too, if you need them.
I think it's somewhere here, but. So you don't have the proposed bridge on this map?
They didn't want to put it on there until they figured out.
Well, we need that to.
Right, but you, there was, I'll let him explain it.
Oh, just the exact location?
Yeah, exactly, he wasn't putting on there until he knew the, knew the exact location, if you guys were to grant it, then he'll put it in, come back to the.
Okay.
You know, that type of situation.
I mean, we can grant it a hundred percent.
So I just wanted to, on his deed, it doesn't reference Great East at all, it only references Rogers Brook. All right, and that's the same thing with the other deeds as well.
Well, we can read through the general requirements and then read through the conditions. And it's just that might help pull out any issues we might see.
Right.
Right.
Current, that's the two sides.
Are you looking at this current edge of Rogers Brook? Are you talking about that or no?
I think what, um, what the real question is that we're grappling with here is whether this is actually a brook or a lake. It says Great East Lake on that map, it says Rogers Brook on this one. So it's difficult to just... We have to make an assessment as to what it is. And last week, or last time we met, we talked about the setback being 250 feet on a lake and 75 feet on a brook. So we thought maybe we could look there. And then we thought it would be helpful to go out and do a site walk. Having done the site walk, you can see it's reasonable to request, you know, a bridge to go across. And I think the DE permit, DE permit was for crossing a brook or a river. And that's the real question that we're faced with here. Is it crossing a lake? Crossing a lake is not allowed. So...
I think there's significant documentation saying that it's a brook. It goes back in all the deeds, it goes back to some older plans as well. The brook has moved around over time, but there's a lot of documentation that refer to these properties as being on a brook.
Right, but we're just struggling with whether it's an inlet. When you, when you look at it, as you said, the river, though the brook did move around.
Yeah.
We just wanna do the right thing here.
Sure, I understand.
And if the brook moved around by man or nature? That's the other issue.
The history that I've been told is mostly nature, I think.
Well, I know they were allowing, filling up to a certain point in time, in history. You know, putting sand on the beach and you could alter things, you could do that.
Yeah.
And it was probably done then.
And where's the lake again and the brook end?
That's, that's what we have to look at.
Yep. Hard to tell, I think, under these circumstances, the way that one lays out.
I think Jason did the right thing in making that call. Um, it's just... Do you wanna go through the conditional use and just see?
I'd love to know if you wanna go through the general requirements first. I mean, I know we have...
What page are you on?
He was already sixty-eight. And he's already supplied us with his answers to him, but...
For the best of my knowledge, some of those are sort of arcane rules that maybe you can explain, but uh...
Right. I mean, I can read these things and we can discuss them if you want.
Yeah.
And then we can... That'll flush out some of the issues anyway. So I'm on 5.16 piers, docks and other shoreline construction. General requirements. A, no causeway, bridge, marina, wharf dock or permanent structure shall be constructed in, on, over or abutting any great pond, nor shall any fill, be deposited dredging done therein without a permit from the Department of Environmental Protection and the code enforcement officer. Okay? B, no causeway, marina, dock, wharf or other permanent or floating structure shall extend more than ten percent of width of any stream measured at its normal high water elevation.
So what would that be? Like, stop right there, what would that be? Fifty feet?
It's fifty feet long bridge, ten percent would be five feet.
Is that, because we were discussing this before.
So we're talking five feet either side of the stream, correct?
Well, that would be twenty percent.
Yeah, so...
So we're talking two and a half feet on it.
You can come up two and a half feet on either side.
That's how I see it.
To me, I think, generally, I guess we could say is that is high water mark right now? The normal high water mark?
Mm-hmm.
If it's fifty feet, you can't go beyond two and a half feet either side. Which is plenty of room to put. Is that correct? That's what I'm...
Yeah, I did, we talked about that last time, Greg. All right. Access from shore shall be developed on soils adequate for such use and constructed as to control soil erosion.
From that soil.
D, the location shall not interfere with any existing developed or natural beach areas. So we have this letter from the Beach Association.
Oh, I'm just playing around, sorry. They don't believe it will, so...
Okay. Uh, the facility shall be located as to minimize adverse effects on fisheries.
In A.
F, the facility shall be no larger in dimension than necessary to carry on the activity and be consistent with the surrounding character and uses of the area. Contemporary, a temporary pier, dock or wharf shall be... Shall not be wider than six feet for non-commercial users.
Minus four, four feet.
Yeah. G, no new structure shall be built on, over or abutting a pier, wharf, dock or other structure extending beyond the normal high water line of a water body or within a wetland unless the structure requires direct access to the water body or wetland as an operational necessity.
It's an old stack and...
Yeah, that's how I understood that to be. It was sort of a long-winded requirement, but it talks about being abutting to other structures or on top of other structures, and that is not the case.
Okay, no existing structures built on, over or abutting a pier, dock, wharf or other structure extending beyond the high water line of a water body or within a wetland shall be converted to residential dwellings, units in any district. Okay? I, new permanent piers and docks shall not be permitted unless it's clearly demonstrated to the planning board that temporary pier or dock is not feasible and a permit has been obtained from the Department of Environmental Protection pursuant of the Natural Resource Protection Act. So... Do we feel like he's clearly demonstrated that we can't use a temporary structure in this case?
I think it, by his definition of what happens to the water table during the winter is usually when people pull docks out of the water, it's because of the ice damage that's caused from freezing water. That it drops so low...
That it doesn't matter.
Technically, nothing's gonna be there to get damaged. So in my opinion, that wouldn't require him to have to pull it out.
Yeah.
Pull it out every year.
That would require him?
That would not.
Would not?
Because the water level drops so low that there's hardly any water there in the winter.
Right, well, that's just one reason that people have a temporary as opposed to a permanent. What this I is asking is that we determine that a temporary is not, it's not feasible to have a temporary structure instead.
Now we're going back to a definition that started about a year ago that we never completed.
Well, he's here because he wanted to leave it in year-round, because if it's temporary, it's not even a conditional use, it's a permit through my office. So in order to keep it...
Still, but...
Right, no, but that's what I'm stating. So he wanted to go permanent, not temporary.
Right, but he has to demonstrate that it's not feasible to have a temporary structure.
All right, and last time we talked about this, you know, I said, you know, of course, anything is feasible, right? But we thought there would be a lot less disturbance to the soils if it's a one-time install rather than dragging stuff in and out and disturbing the, you know, the underlying...
I can see that, because trudging for that mud year in, year out
It would cause more.
Just stirs everything up. And it's probably pretty thick and deep.
It is, it is, that's why...
Well, I think it'd be, you know, we could potentially have a floating structure that then would be just towed around to a boat launch and brought out there. Potentially, I mean, you know...
Yeah, potentially.
You wouldn't have to haul it out right there, is what I'm thinking.
Right.
It is awfully wet right there.
And that's what I was thinking, is that every time you drag it up on shore, you're ripping up roots and moss and things like that, so... So even though it might be feasible, I think practically speaking, it...
I think it'd be more destructive than not to have a permanent structure instead of a... And technically, I don't consider this a permanent structure, because unless you're putting pylons into the ground...
Yes.
To where it would take heavy equipment to remove it, I don't consider it permanent. My opinion only.
Certainly not doing...
We never did finish the definition of permanent.
Well, permanent means it's in the water for more than six months of the year.
Well, see, I don't, I don't put a time limit on temporary.
Yeah, but the planning board...
A pier that is pylon'd into the ground is a permanent structure. A dock that is sitting on top of the earth in the water is a temporary structure, is my definition of permanent.
Well, we can debate that on another topic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like I, we still, you know, there's still some
Movement there.
Question as to whether or not that there is a feasible temporary, like seasonal alternative. Um, we go on to J.
Permanent and temporary docks, on page twenty-nine. That says if it's permanent, is structures that which remain over, in or over the water for seven months or more in a period of twelve consecutive months. It's considered permanent. That's per our, just our ordinance. Whether that's how you, you don't have to interpret it that way, but that's just how our ordinance...
Right, yeah.
I think you would have the state definition.
Yeah.
Okay, um, J, structures built on, over or abutting a pier, dock, wharf or other structure extending beyond the normal high water line of a water body or within a wetland shall not exceed twenty feet in height above the pier, dock or other structure. Okay?
In A.
But she's not proposing to do that. Okay, new permanent structures and expansions thereof projecting over, into or over water bodies shall require a permit from the DEP pursuant of the Natural Resource Protection Act, thirty-eight MRSA, section four eighty C. Permits may also be required from the Corps of Engineers if located in navigable waters.
G has.
Which, you have that, right?
Yep, yes.
Well, that's what we have in the general requirements. Okay, do we wanna read through the standards applicable for conditional uses? All right.
All right, six point six, three, four.
Uh, if you want, I was gonna start at six point six, point three, point seven. Uh, I'm on eighty-eight.
Yeah, I don't know why it's...
Are you missing it too, or?
Yeah.
Okay. What is it? Oh, you have that one that you handed out to us.
Oh, yeah.
But it's missing.
Yeah, it's missing something. I think I should just print it up, the ones from the general, not further.
That's from six point, three point six to three point eight.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
We also have it in, we got a couple copies of that thing. It's in this, this thing too.
I got it on...
Yeah, page eighty-eight.
Yeah.
Okay. The use will not have an adverse impact on spawning grounds, fish, aquatic life, bird or other wildlife habitat.
No.
I'm gonna take the fine on that.
Okay. D, B, the use will conserve shore cover and visual as well as actual access to water bodies. So this one, we've looked to see how many people are up the brook, so to speak, but...
Right, this...
It's just the, the neighbor who already has a bridge.
Right, and the other neighbor has a bridge.
But they did, they had to have a couple boats that they would probably wanna launch right from their yard that...
Right.
That would be able to get onto your proposal, right?
Yeah, and...
This is that one, meaning it has those boats, right?
That's right, yeah.
Right, right, what about people going in, right?
Yeah, in and out.
My understanding is just kayaks and, um...
Right, yeah, you're not gonna get a... Get up in there and tell you that?
No, it's not really navigable, is the strict sense of the word.
You got a jet boat in there, but you're not gonna fire.
Right. Well, I mean, that is, does seem to be one of the... We wanna make sure that we're not compromising anyone's access.
Yeah, they still have full access over their bridge onto the beach, which is what they've done in the past. Just recently, they started using their kayaks right from the, from the property. So that's why I raised it, you know, the idea would be to raise the section in the middle to allow access.
Right, then anyone coming off the big lake will see it and probably just turn around anyways. Not in a kayak or anything.
Right.
Place to go but to the next bridge, so...
Right. Yeah, it's kind of, I don't know, it's kind of a tricky one. Um, all right, C.
It's tricky, but it...
Well, it seems like one of the ones that kind of is more designed for this particular situation. You read through a lot of these standards and they're not, not anything that we would even be looking at. But this one does kind of speak to the particular case.
Right, the visual part of the bridge?
Visual and actual access.
I'm more concerned with the neighbor who cut all the shrubs down.
Yeah.
Well, it's a separate issue.
That you get to deal with.
It does conserve shore cover, because he's going on top of it. Digging it up, so...
I think Gavin's nearly enjoys the access.
Yeah, just from, from people who wanna go in and out of that inlet. But it's pretty, there's not much further you can go.
No, if you looked at it, as soon as you get under his bridge there, that's it. I mean, the water is about this deep, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, it gets very shallow.
Again, you got underneath, yeah, that's second, not be the first bridge.
Well, that, that was only, like, actual depth, it was only like two feet, two, three feet wide where the sand was, and then, I mean, it was whatever, but after that, it's...
You're scraping the water, you're scraping bottom, even in a kayak.
You're not getting a boat down there. No, and again, the center section of the bridge is raised up high enough to pass over.
Actually, limiting access up there would probably be beneficial to the bottom of that lake.
Probably will.
People aren't digging it up.
Well, they'll dig it up with the paddles anyways, coming in with the kayaks. Way.
Okay. The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, C. I don't, I think it is. D, traffic access to the site meets the standards contained in this ordinance and traffic congestion has been addressed in accordance with performance standards in this ordinance, N.A. E, the site design is in conformance with all municipal flood hazard protection regulations. I think we're all set.
I think we're good as well.
I think we're okay with that. Adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and solid waste has been made. Okay, G, adequate provision for the transportation, storage and disposal of any hazardous materials has been made. H, a stormwater drainage system. I, adequate provisions to control soil erosion and sedimentation have been made. So that would just be on the two ends of the bridge. And, um. You're, you're gonna do something in your yard to, uh, to, to make it drier to get to the bridge, or?
In terms of the foot traffic to the bridge?
Yeah, just when you're walking, walking to the bridge from your property.
Right, so, goes back to that two and a half foot rule. I thought a, a small ramp to get onto dry land would be smart. It might be beyond two and a half feet, but I'd start with that, start there. And that way at least, um, as you're coming off, you're going up to solid, uh, soil.
Yeah.
Would you have something temporary?
Yep.
In that case?
Yes, yes, that could be taken on.
Probably just lean planks up off on the.
If, if it's not attached to the bridge itself, then it's not considered part of the bridge, right? So it wouldn't violate that ten percent if you put a plank down.
That's a good idea.
And pick it up.
Right, yeah, that way it's not attached and it gets you far enough so that as you come off the water, you're on solid ground.
You'll preserve that area from.
Sure.
Trampled in and.
Yeah, yeah, because when we all walked down there, it was.
It wouldn't take long to tear all that up.
Yeah.
All the traffic.
Okay.
I think the rest doesn't apply.
Some adequate water supply. Provisions for buffer strips and home lane sit.
Don't you worry, Fugus, if there's such as noise, glare, fields, dust, odor and the like.
Yeah.
There's gonna be little kids, happy kids going to the beach.
Right.
Making noise.
And L, all performance standards in this ordinance applicable to the proposed use will be met. And, which we got read through earlier. And M, archaeological, historic resources will be protected. Yeah, do you feel that the application is complete?
Yeah, I think so.
We should vote on that, I think, and then. Yeah, see if anything comes up in public hearing. Yeah. So, the only two, the only thing that stuck out to me was the feasibility of it being temporary. And the visual and actual access were the only two things that kind of. Seem like they, you know, could be anything. But I think, um. Application is complete, so I'll make a motion.
Where is the thing here?
Make a motion that, uh. Accept the conditional use permit for John Olizotti, uh, one oh four Jericho Way. And that, uh. It is complete as written and we should put it to a public hearing.
One second.
I want to, get a little time for the public hearing on the twenty-first.
I think we do.
More than ten days.
I think we can do it on the twenty-first. As long as we can get the, uh.
Site walk done.
The letters to abutters.
I'll get those out tomorrow. Twenty-first.
Does that work for you, Jim?
I'm here anyway.
Yeah, twenty-first, then.
So yes, it works.
I didn't know if you were looking at it yet.
I was looking at it, I was making sure we met our timeframes.
Yeah, it might be kind of close.
We were kind of getting close on the, on the.
On the ten days.
On the ten days for public circulation, but we're gonna, I really feel that we need to be changing that in our ordinance anyway for.
Well.
Well, the whole newspaper.
You should be saying you can make the ten days.
Right, no, I'm just saying that those people are looking at it online, they're not finding it in a newspaper.
Well, it just depends.
We're missing that.
We have to get it in the newspaper. You see what I'm saying, because the news, what, what is the publication day that people would be?
I think, believe it or not.
Thursdays?
Yeah.
So it wouldn't come out till next, we could get it in for next Thursday and that would be seven days ahead.
So we have to do the following meeting.
It's also published seven days from the town website.
Right, but it has to be, it says right in here.
Ten days prior. People that don't have internet.
And just, um.
Yes, just probably watch it on.
Right in here.
Maybe they don't have TV.
Yeah, so like we've done this more than once now, but, um, subject of the hearing at least ten days in advance on the town website and in newspaper of general circulation, which, we've had this discussion about the general circulation, the newspaper general circulation more than once.
So it won't make it?
It won't make the general news, the circulation.
So let's, so we can set it for the next meeting.
Push it out to July. I mean, August.
What's the next?
Four. August four.
August fourth.
It has to be August fourth to make it through.
Get you, we'll get it approved or denied by the end of the summer sometime.
Yeah.
When do we start, March? Is there any way to do it earlier? I'd appreciate it, but.
Uh, we have requirements that we have to meet that other people have had to meet and until we change, until it gets changed in our ordinance, we have to keep on doing that. So, whether we agree with it or not.
Okay.
Still plenty of summer left.
No, don't want to be out there in October and November.
So public hearing, July fourth, all right, August fourth.
Yeah, all right.
I don't want to relive my July fourth, but I will.
Still recovering, dude.
Do you need these back?
I, you know, I'm not sure, I've got my own, uh, copies of those, but.
I know they cost too much.
I need, I need one.
Like this back.
So we do have to pin down this location of the.
Want to keep one copy.
Proposed location on the map because if you want us to.
Sign off.
Sign this thing after the hearing, it has to, it has to be on there.
It's gonna be on there.
So if they, if, if everything turns out in your favor and they stay on August fourth, they'll have the, the ability to sign off on it, but it has to have, we're gonna need that bridge on that map. On the one that, on, on the signature, one with the signature block on it.
Got you. Does it necessarily have to be, uh, this official plan that gets registered? Or can it be, you know, if I have a version of this, uh, in PDF and I put in where the bridge is and it's got all the rest of the information, like the block, the title block and the shoreline zone.
Let's see why not, we've done, we just did a condition.
Well, usually it's supposed to be the, just like, served from the surveyor, it's gonna go to Alfred once it leaves here, it's a superior court. You know, it should be enough, uh, verified survey.
It's already got the signature block right in the middle.
I know, but he was asking if he.
Right, he didn't want to go back, he didn't want to go back to the survey company.
Which is understandable, but.
Because I have another version that, that, my son's an architect, that he took and docked it up with the exact same information. I was just, and he's got the bridge on there and he can put the bridge anywhere, but if, if your preference is to get it on the official survey, I can.
Well, where is the bridge gonna go?
That was some of the purpose of this meeting, I suppose, too, right?
To determine, because you, you, obviously you not putting it on there made, made you feel like there was some hesitation about the location.
Yeah, it wasn't me, it was the, uh, survey office, so, um, I assumed that, you know, when we went down and looked together, um, that I'd pull it where that stake was in the ground, I'd pull it back, uh, ten feet or so and start there and.
So you're gonna leave the ten feet to the property line?
Right, right, and so, you know, on this, you sort of put it in best, you know, eyeball, uh, that you can.
And you'll still have the same terminus of the bridge on the other side?
On the other side.
Is it gonna make it longer, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe a few feet, yeah.
It is gonna make it longer.
It will make it longer.
The absolute minimum would be extending your property line to the high watermark and that's your corner, that's your edge right there, that would be the minimum.
Right.
Be the right side of your bridge, that way.
So it, you saw where that pin was, it was still sort of ten feet away from it anyway.
Yeah.
So. It might be able to just go where I had that stake, I was just trying to make sure we look funny by scooting it over a little bit.
But he doesn't.
Rather than have to redo something.
Yeah, they have to go ten.
Two and a half feet?
Yeah, not even.
Two and a half feet of the bridge is gonna be on.
It's go straight down.
Right, but that two and a half feet's gonna be right on the property line.
Shortest distance between two points is.
There you go. So if he keeps it where the stake is, the two and a half feet that's gonna land on the, right on the property line, can it be on the property line?
Uh, so when, if you're talking about docks, if you're talking about docks, a dock can go right on your property.
It's not a dock.
Right, it's a bridge, it's a permanent structure.
Permanent.
If it was a dock, it does, it can go right on your property line.
Or if it was temporary.
It's a permanent structure.
It was just like a floating.
I think in this case, it's better to put it closer to the property line if he, if he's allowed to do that.
Make the thing shorter.
Makes it shorter.
Yeah, I know what you guys are talking about. I'll, I'll, I'll look into it.
Because if he has the movement ten feet off that property line, you say, you're looking at another ten feet.
Yeah. Conversation for off camera.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, um, because that location is.
Yeah.
Crucial to the completion of the project. And for the hearing, we should really know.
Where it's gonna go.
If we're, you know, um, maybe there's.
You take some measurements or if you were to put it where you want it, and then if you were to put it ten feet off of your property line.
Ten feet.
How much of a difference that makes.
Sure. That's easy.
Yeah, because actually it gets wider as you go closer to the lake, that gives you more. It's still ten percent.
Right.
No matter how wide it is.
Yeah, sort of, I was gonna just mention that, yeah, ten percent of bigger numbers, more feet on each side.
Yep.
But I do tend to agree, I think putting it where you were saying is probably at the less impact.
Yeah.
And it is, yeah, just forward of the pin.
Just looked to me like you didn't even know the whole section of dock.
Right.
Look it in, at least.
Well, the property line doesn't stop at the pin, it's just the property line, his property line stops at the high watermark of the lake, correct?
Yep.
That's just the line. But you go down all the way to the water's edge. You can start right there. As long as there isn't a fireman for your permanent structure, he's so far away.
Right, right, that, that would be sure.
That would be the only question that Jason will know the answer to.
Yeah, okay.
What happened there?
Uh, this thing's, it's all, you don't even want to know. It's the worst program we, that the town has.
Well, the, the blue looks more accurate on this one than the blue line.
Uh, no, it's just because it just hasn't refreshed itself.
Well, that looks more like red color. You know, the little, yeah.
Can I go through the house?
Right. Oh, what did I, um, that's because I took off the. That's why, I took off the streams. Goes right back to the house. But then the stream also goes all the way through Great East too.
That it?
Well, I just want to get this, I'd love to, right here, I'm almost there.
You did all the proper procedures.
So we got everything scheduled for this one, right?
Yep, August fourth.
Okay. That's it for now?
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much. So my action item is.
Anything else?
No, I just want to make sure we got that thing on the map for the hearing because we're not really.
Yeah, it has to be on there.
Yeah, because it's not really actually complete. It's complete, but.
Thanks a million.
Right, so you, you're just doing the bridge, he is just to put the bridge on.
He's gonna put the bridge on, yeah.
Put the bridge on. On the official one.
Yeah.
Very good.
Good night.
Right, I just wanted to look in here at all the different, um. Setback and, well, I don't know, that was just definition for, for sideline, line width, you know, and all that kind of stuff, but it doesn't really tell me in that area.
Jason here?
I think he should be the ten feet.
Uh, what, what, what was that?
Your business.
Permanent, too. I would technically say it would be the ten foot off the property line.
Mm-hmm, it's probably what we should act to, I guess.
But in this case, I think.
Well, we gotta get the neighbor to, you know.
They end up.
If the neighbor comes to the hearing, then that could be.
Right, yep.
If the neighbor says, oh, that, wow, I still don't know if you can, I don't know if that would even do it.
That mean he's in violation letter too?
Yeah.
Is that when he hands him the violation letter?
Yeah, really.
Moving on.
New business, uh, Robert Roswell, two, twenty-three zero four Mills Road, lot two four one dash zero zero six, conditional use for a food truck named Bob's Ugly Bagels.
Good, how are you?
Good.
So I'm seeking, uh, a conditional use permit to put my business, Bob's Ugly Bagels, um, food trailer on the lot that you mentioned, um, for a short duration, um, now that the summer's, um, pretty much underway and, um, but I was looking to have it as early as possible on this lot through the end of the summer and into, um, possibly November. It's a self, completely self-contained trailer. It's, um, does not need power, um, from electrical lines, um, or water sources, um, on the, on the property, so everything is self-contained. It is state certified as well, so everything is, um. The state has already certified it and fire codes, um, with the, with the state, the, or not with the state, um, we have a fire suppression system that's been inspected, that's all.
We have a fire suppression system that's been inspected, that's all been taken care
Oh, by the fire.
It's right on, it's right on out there.
Cool, nevermind.
It's on the other side, the adjacent side of Iron Tales. It's where they put their little cutoff. Yeah, right there.
Oh, yeah, I know, we were.
There's something on the map.
Asking about that island-like thing in 109 right there. Really doesn't have much to do with the project.
Oh, it's a booga.
I think they put a guard rail there now, so you can't even go. Yeah.
13th Street.
So on your application here, applicants' legal interest in the property, you checked off other, so you didn't write anything? Are you gonna be?
He hasn't written agreement.
Rental agreement, sort of?
Rent agreement from Mapes, John Mapes and Corporation or whatever, and Company, to use the property.
It's a Mapes.
Right, well, should we?
Which is on.
Should we be also speaking with John Mapes at this time?
He's got a letter in here for you.
Okay.
Right here. Third page.
Oh, I already went by it, right. All right, well, that's for good.
And it has, obviously it has the deed from John Mapes.
Is it there?
I'm gonna say this is the same copy that they're looking at.
I kinda feel like he should've, should've wrote something to show the word other, though, on the front.
Yep, just pull it, change it.
Where is the? I think it's the second page.
Yeah, it is the letter.
Yes, third.
Agreement or use of property is there in Mapes.
And did you get in touch with the DOT? I did. So you're. They're actually, he's gonna be either looking at, he was supposed to look at it today or tomorrow. He said, but he did give me the guidelines, which.
I don't know.
It was, yeah, he gave me visibility, footage, which seemed to be.
The application on the front.
Seemed to be very.
First page says other, and there's nothing written. It's incomplete application.
You just asked him about DOT?
Yeah, there was.
Did they come out yet or no?
He said he was coming out either today or tomorrow. He did give me the guidelines for what he'd be checking for visibility, which does not look like there's any issue there.
Yeah, how close is it today to the intersection?
Uh, jeez. The one that comes out on.
He's down about. I'm sorry, what was your question?
Corner of 109 and Milton Mills Road, how far is that?
I believe 395, 395 feet, well, the footage from the road to the drive.
Yeah.
It's, I think the drive is very, very close to the corner of his lot, the back corner, not the. I'm working on it, Chris. But there's 500, I believe it's 500 and. Sometime today, it'll clear itself out. Around 582 feet is that from the road to that back corner, so. Oh, the back corner, yeah. So this is right here, it's saying it's about 400 feet off of the.
It's quite a ways.
Off the center of the road area.
It's actually down beyond Iron Tales back gate.
Yeah.
It's down.
Most definitely than that, yeah. Yeah, so from the center of the road, it looks like I'm approximately 375 both directions.
Plenty of room on 109, so there's no.
So what do you want, where it says other, just lease agreement?
Is that what it is?
It's kind of what I would say rental agreement, or just, he's just been given permission.
Right, it was more just permission. So is there money changing hands?
Sharing in the profits.
It's a short time and, yeah.
I got an off-the-wall question, what makes your bagels so ugly?
Well, it's, it came from when I started making them. Bread making is, with bagels is very difficult to get the, to get it the way you want it. And had a lot of good taste in bagels, but very ugly looking. So that's where the name came from.
It's a catchy tongue. No, my bagels. Well, you've answered my curiosity, because I've been watching that stuff go on down there, where they moved the pile out, and then they kept a little bit of dirt in, and they kept moving things around, because I got friends who live on Moon Pond, so I'm back and forth all the time. I said, what's going on here? And he said, I heard rumors about Harry's going in. I said, nothing, nothing's going in there.
Oh, I know. They'd be in front of you, they're, they'll be coming in front of you before anything goes in.
Is there a water thing on your trailer?
Yes, there's a water tank, yep, there's a whole big tank.
Now, is this gonna be stationary or not?
It is. It is not going to be towed in and out. It's gonna stay there for the duration of the length that I wanted to stay there.
So I guess you got plans and means of resupplying your water and.
Yeah, yes, I do.
Is there just a gate?
Fire extinguishers in your.
I have everything, yeah.
Fire suppression system.
Are we putting up a gate?
When I close, when I close, I put a highly visible chain or something, but highly visible on both ends.
When you say both ends, are you talking about this?
Both entrances to the property, yes.
On 109 and?
And 109, yes.
Okay. And when you get your map together, you're gonna include porta-potties, right?
That is, I did not, I did not, I wanted to find out if that's something that was required by you.
Well, what made me think of that is that this drawing here, you've got tables for people to sit at. It's not like a drive-through sort of place.
Okay, if there, and if I did not have tables, that wouldn't qualify.
Well, I'm not sure, I do feel like. People are gonna be eating in their cars. That's kind of how it works with restaurants, right?
Yeah.
If it's sit-down, then they need to have a public bathroom of some sort.
Usually if it's an eating establishment, they have a porta-potty or something.
Yeah.
Even if it's just takeout.
Might be a nice convenience.
It would.
You know, I mean.
Sanitary.
Yeah. Well, then you got those people, if you got a line and you're waiting for food and, you know, kids can get, you know.
Sometimes coffee just sits wrong in the morning, too.
It might be more pleasure, then you put tables out there, anybody knows they can sit around for a while.
I was thinking more of the time period that I'd be, I believe I'm probably gonna be open less, if the public hearing is, as you're saying, and that is gonna push me into, into August, I won't even have a, I probably won't even have a whole month there.
So you'd be looking.
And then I'd be going there for, just be open there for the weekends after that. So that's why I was hoping that if I didn't have to put a porta-potty, you know.
It's okay, because the Dunkin' Donuts downtown is a drive-through only. So if that's what you are, is a drive-through only, then.
Well, it's not drive-through, it's walk-on.
Well, I know, but I mean, drive-through, you stop, you get what you want, and you go. Yeah, I understand.
One, just like the parking's gonna be pretty.
But it's not, it's not a, like you're saying, sit-down restaurant.
Well, I don't know, that's what we need to determine. Is it a table, or if they're gonna sit, what happens if they sit in their vehicle and eat?
They're on private property, maybe.
Yeah, well, we all have to figure out what that line is, I guess.
Yeah.
But we can, I think we can schedule a site walk with the same, pretty much the same as Pat Stevens' one.
Right down the street.
Right next to it. Not gonna take that long to do either one. And it's close to Town Hall.
So in our, in our land use chart, it doesn't have anything for facilities offering food and beverages prepared on premises that isn't sit-down. All we have is sit-down. And that's why we, I put them into site plan review, but just because the tables was an idea, it wasn't a, I have to have them, it was kind of like, it'd be nice to have some tables there.
Oh, sure.
You know what I mean?
I'm just, I'm not sure where the line is for that.
Right.
Needing porta-potties. I think part of it is flow of people, too, how many people you're servicing, but I, you gotta actually find it in the verbiage. Especially if your bagels are good, it'd be a lot of business.
Site walk for the 17th? No, it's 21st, I'm sorry.
Wanna set his up for, what, 5:30? Do a half an hour with Pat and then.
Yeah, I don't think his will take too long, I mean, it's a pretty vacant lot. Both. I'm thinking this one, well, I think Pat's will be a little bit warmer.
That's why you put 5:30, then 15 minutes with.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't want to do it any earlier than five, yeah. I think we can do that. This one really wouldn't take long.
No.
Because then we can be back here.
Yeah.
Less than five minutes.
27?
Uh, no.
21st.
I'll just go from Pat's to Bob's, like we bagels.
Surprised no people ain't cutting through that thing already.
Four hours you gonna operate?
Six to two. Six to two. And I did put on there that there may be events, I know the fair will be happening, and it wouldn't go till, I mean, it would be daylight hours, but if there was an opportunity that.
Make more money.
To stay open later, I would, I'd like to.
Well, I think we should just make his hours broader, and if he does, if he wants to stop at two, that's fine. You know, because there's no reason for us to limit what he can do. I mean, if you see an opportunity to make more money, make late connections, I think.
Who doesn't like a breakfast sandwich for lunch?
Mostly doing the.
With a bagel. I mean, for dinner.
Six to six?
Make sure everybody coming up the back door.
What are you gonna do for trash removal and stuff? Are you gonna take it with you at the end of the day?
And from my experience, I'm not generating much trash.
So what else, what did, what else are you gonna be selling of in bagels?
I make my own bagels. That will be part of the breakfast sandwiches, lunch sandwiches we make. I roast my own coffee beans, so we'll be selling our own coffee as well as serving the coffee with our beans. And soups, we make our own soups. Our treats, all of our, everything we make right there in the trailer. The spreads for the bagels.
Yeah.
Yeah. We do everything right there out of the trailer.
So you're gonna have a outside trash can for?
Yes.
Soups makes me feel like more people would be sitting down.
Stop talking about food, because I'm starving.
Yeah. You're not gonna drive in a hot soup, I wanna sit down in a hot soup.
Then you can take it home.
Right. You see the way I drive on the way home?
Oh, it would still be hot when you got home.
Right. If it makes it. Maybe all over the floor. Yeah. It's good, too.
So we're gonna do his after or before?
After, 5:30.
So about 5:30, we'll be at that property.
Okay.
Mean this thing?
Sounds good.
And then we'll come immediately back here for the whole of the application and checklist.
Yeah, and we'll wanna get a, get a drawing or map going.
Yeah.
I mean, something like this, but.
Kind of like what we did for the porta-potty shop?
Yeah. Well, I mean, it's worth even site plan review on this one, I mean. We want, I mean, we need some sort of, something assigned. That would give those details, like where the trash receptacle would go, are there gonna be tables? Porta-johns, per se. Yeah, just some of those, some of those notes. That would just speed us up getting the hearing scheduled, too.
I mean, my, from other applications I filled out or, and have reviewed, making sure the trash receptacles were right there, attached to the trailer was something that I don't mind doing, just to, so everything is right there at the trailer and if, and I'm, I'd love that tables, but if that's gonna add another 150 hours of.
I don't think it's gonna make a big difference. We still, we still gotta figure out the porta thing regardless if you have tables or not. I think the tables are a good idea, I don't think they're, I think they'd help in business.
And would I be responsible for putting that map together, is that what?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, you might be able to get something from, from Mapes, yeah, that has a, he probably already has a surveyed plot plan. Or at least it would be worth asking him, because that would really speed you up on
Yeah, if he has, already has one of those plot plans, we just need your layout.
I don't think he has that road in there.
Well, that's what I mean, if they can go to the.
Right, well, you have to. You have to wait for DOT to approve the entrances anyway, right, before you can, before you put them on the surveyed plot plan. Yeah. So that's something we're hoping DOT, you should have been there by the 21st? He said either today or tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you know DOT. Right. But I bet by the 21st, that should be fine, because we'd like, you know.
If you build it.
Point of interest. Right.
Okay.
Come after you.
What's up? Any other questions?
That's it?
Yeah, we'll see you on the 21st at 5:30.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Gavin, in the past, have you ever scheduled a hearing in advance, or you always went through the site plan, site walk first?
Right, yeah, we always, yeah.
If you knew that.
Because we haven't even dug into these things.
Right. I was just trying to think of ways to.
Speed up.
Cut time down so that we're not pushing out something simple, whether it's simple or not. Pushing it out another month, because that's pretty much what we have to do. By using the 10-day things, you never get to get to the next meeting unless you have a five-week.
Like the roadblock running.
Five to seven to ten days.
Our ordinance says ten days.
Where did the seven to ten days come from?
I don't know, but...
Heard it once.
So, is that...
That's my, that would be my next question, I guess. Would, so the public hearing would not happen until the next meeting?
Right, we have to hold the, the applications complete.
So that would push it past August fourth?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, you would be looking at the third week in August. And that's kinda what I'm saying, it just, we keep on pushing people out. I know it's a time thing, but it just, uh...
Well, that, that's just how the process works.
I know how it works.
Would it help if we did seven?
Procedure?
Would it help if we did seven?
Review procedure and public hearing, and that is under, on page...
Right at the beginning, right?
Eighty-seven. Underneath conditional use permits, you keep on going all the way down to six point, six point, six point, three point, four. It's in the first paragraph. Six point, six point, three point, four. Review procedures and public hearing.
I don't know where I heard seven.
If it was seven, it'd be nice. We can, we can make it all the time. We wouldn't have an issue. But where it's ten, it really throws it in for, it hurts the applicant.
Right, and if it, because the way it's worded, if it said, "and/or" newspaper...
I guess it's time to review an ordinance, because it really is bugging out the things.
Well, it's gonna change.
And that's kinda what I was asking, is there a way to...
No, it's always been like that.
Right.
I mean, these things are designed for big projects.
There is a way, but then...
You know what I mean? When you get a small project or like a...
Yeah, I know, I, I...
I don't know. Usually, the small ones are already ongoing, so it doesn't even slow them down, kinda like that auto repair place. We didn't slow him down with, with the procedure, because he was already operating. You know?
Well, is Bob already operating?
I don't know. I won't find him if he is.
I don't think he's operating that location.
He's gonna wait, wait for DOT. I'll let you know, because I go by the heavy day. I'll see him out there.
These things.
Just, it's just, just curious, because of other food trailers that are coming and they are just on the side of the road and people are just popping in and popping out and...
Right, but they're, they come and go on the same day, right?
What was that?
Generally?
Generally, but if we're pushing it three weeks into August, then that's what I'm going to be doing, staying open two days a week. And I become something different.
Are you operating right now somewhere else, or?
Not, not at the moment. No.
But you have in the past?
Yeah, I have. And, and I've had, I've had cities that are less lenient. And it's, it's what makes this a little more difficult, um, to, and...
He's looking to come closer to home. Where was it you were going to before Belfast?
Belfast. And they've, you know, they've, yeah, and it was a very well-received business in the city and, um, and, you know, we don't wanna break our family apart, so by, for whatever reasons, our kids are grown up in, in high school, so, uh, we wanna stay close to home together and run the business together and, um, it becomes, for some reason, a vending truck that comes and goes is allowed almost any place. But when I sit on a lot, it makes it, and it's completely self-contained.
So could he operate by pulling out until he got his stuff through? I know that it would be a pain in the neck.
Well, it's all self-contained. He's packed up, drive off.
Yeah.
But you move it every night.
I don't know, I don't know if that, uh, how that works exactly.
I have nothing.
I mean, I shop late.
Yeah, we'd have to look at our ordinances for food trucks.
Think we have anything.
We did one, Grammy Rose had one for their soft opening and we allowed it as long as it wasn't, um, mass gathering. So if she can have two hundred and fifty people at one time, then...
Well, yeah, your bagel's that good to have two hundred and fifty people at one time?
No, definitely not.
Be nice.
Right, Grammy Rose, existing business, this is vacant.
They weren't, uh, approved for food trucks, though?
No.
Who'd go across the street?
Huh?
What about across the street? They have food trucks there.
At the fairground? Oh, but he's got approved for a section for food trucks, because he originally wanted to put it, uh, he's got permission to put it at Iron Tails, too, but it's in a different spot than where it's, so he wanted it up front, in the front corner of the parking lot where you first entered, correct?
And...
Greg gave him permission to do that, but he's only, he's got a, a, a lauded spot for food trucks in the back gated area.
Right, um, along the Milton Mills, parallels to Milton Mills.
And so he went to Mates, he has a relationship with John Mates, and so he went and asked him to use his property.
So given the restrictions, is it possible that you could continue to operate temporarily in that location? And then, so that way you wouldn't be, you'd be able to operate until, you know, while you're waiting for all of the red tape?
Well, that makes sense. If you can do the temporary thing until we can get this approval through, at least you can be operating.
But I don't see any big issues with it.
Well, he's on private property if he's just pulling in, sitting there for the day.
Get the permission for the DOT first.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be the key.
So temporary would be...
Pulling in, pulling out every day.
Every day?
I don't know, because it...
Yeah, I don't either.
I think, um, I'm pretty sure if you have a, like a camper or an RV, you don't have to register with the town until you've been parked for thirty days.
Ooh.
That's amazing.
I don't, I'm trying to find the...
No, you're not, oh, you're not allowed to stay more than ninety days or something like that.
Or is it not?
Ninety days, you're allowed...
Well, after thirty days.
A town will, will allot a, a personal campsite for up to ninety days out of a twelve-month period. Something like that. It's...
Do you have your porta-potty or...
Well, I think they can stay there as long as they have proper septic design, you know, whether it's, they have to start producing receipts that they went to a proper disposal area or they have to get a portable there. But they can stay thirty days without having to deal with that. So if, you know, your, your family came to visit you for the, for the July, they stayed two weeks in their RV outside your house, you don't need to get a permit for that, but if they're there for more than thirty...
Ten days?
Thirty days, I think, then they, then you start having to deal with these, then it becomes like a dwelling almost, you know? So I wonder if he can operate for thirty days before he has to...
Move on.
Be official.
Well, here's one thing I know. If you park it there and nobody bothers you, you're fine. What's the worst that could happen? They say you gotta move.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reluctant to, to tell him he can go ahead, but we could...
I'm not saying go ahead, I'm just saying...
I was suggesting across the street.
Right, well, yeah, but he didn't like the location, it's not very visible.
But it's allowing him to operate.
Yeah, yeah.
While the red tape goes through.
Well, I, I almost wonder if we could, uh, construct a letter to, uh, one of our consultants, North Star or Southern Maine, and ask them.
This is one we really haven't addressed, and we don't have the, I mean, order for food service truck pulls into the parking lot right here. Because he has to get the permission of the town.
Yeah, but as he said, they pull out.
Well, he has permission of the property owned, right, but then they leave that same day.
Yeah, I think he'd pull out if he pulled in and out.
Right.
Temporarily.
Right. Well, I think, I think we should, I think we should ask the, I think we should ask Bob Smith or Lee J.
That would be a good question, because that's...
Because that would, that would allow him to operate during the summer, because otherwise he's not gonna operate during the summer. Or he, or he can come and go every day.
At least we, we'd know the legality, so we could base something on if we wanted to work on it. The legal ramifications.
Yeah.
I agree, I think.
I mean, nobody's gonna tell him to leave if he's doing it. You know? But it's, I'm not sure it's our place to give him, give him the go-ahead without getting some sort of...
No, can't say you can't, can't say you can't.
Right, right, right.
We don't have anything in our ordinances that covers it at the moment, but...
I think everything is self-contained. I think he's good. That's what I see there.
Well, I'm looking at it the same way as an RV, you know? I put my RV somewhere and I disconnect it from my truck. It's parked, it's self-contained. There's nothing illegal about the whole thing.
But it's not just a drive-through?
Five-eleven.
I tell them.
It's a drive-through facility. Designed a drive-through facilities.
Well, this is a good neighbor. Good neighbor policy.
Trying to find that other thing that Gavin was talking about, too.
What's that?
Oh, I gotta fucking...
Thirty days for a camper?
Yeah.
It's on, it's backup on, I was just on there.
Yeah.
It's up to forty-nine, page forty-nine.
I think because everything's self-contained from what I saw, I think he's fine. At least you have a porta-potty or something.
Uh, when a recreational vehicle tent or similar shelter is occupied on-site for more than thirty days per year, all requirements for residential structure shall be met, including installation of a subsurface sewage disposal system in compliance with main state subsurface wastewater.
Does not say consecutive.
That would be your porta-john.
What?
Does not say consecutive.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, so if he's there for twenty-nine days, he pulls out for a day, then he goes back in and starts up again. Correct?
No.
Says thirty days.
You're not supposed to point that...
Per year.
Thirty days per year.
Per year, but, but they're not consecutive days.
Are you planning on open being seven days a week? As soon as you can get up, operating?
Possibly.
Yeah, this is recreational vehicles, moving to, on going...
I think we're fetching for something right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's just a while since we get going.
And that would...
It's not, it's not like it's a big...
If that was possible, and like you said, um, during that time, if, what, if it was three weeks before the next meeting, is three weeks, three or four weeks?
Twenty-first and then...
The fourth.
Yeah. If...
Well, all this thing says here is anyone locating an RV on this lot remaining a lot more than seven days must notify the local plumbing inspector. So if he had a porta-potty on the spot, he looked, the local plumbing inspector comes out, says, "Okay, you got a porta-potty and you got a self-contained water unit," but it says no more than six months out of the year. That's it. Now, that's for an RV, but...
Yeah, that's, this is...
What do you guys think about, uh, just constructing a question to one of our consultants?
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, that would probably save everybody a headache.
Yeah, 'cause I also had a...
But in the interim...
Well, I think we can get that done pretty quickly, like, I mean, could you be down there tomorrow, slinging bagels or...
If, if I could make it there, I would.
No, I mean, you're ready to go tomorrow, so it'd be...
I, I probably need a few days.
Few days?
Yeah, so if you're able to...
I think we could get, get word from the consultant within a few days and...
Let's ask our consultant. In the interim, he's waiting for DOT. We got a few days, right? How long would it take for them to give back to us? Because we really do need some guidance here. We don't have...
We just have to construct a language that we're gonna have.
Yeah, starting with an RV description, we're going to the next level, which is a self-contained food truck.
Yeah.
What do you think?
And he's, it's not like he's living there.
Yeah, and he's not, yeah, and it's not a living quarters, it's self-contained. Yeah, we could use some guidance, because if we have to work up something on this.
Yeah.
Start. I agree. Let's get the pros in here. Give us some guidance. I don't know the legalities behind it, so...
It's a site walk on the twenty-first and go from there.
The only time I worked on many of those is when we had one, but we went to fairs. So you're on the fairground, everything was covered.
Right, right, probably bathrooms and everything are there.
I was gonna say, the next thing would be to rent a little spot in the active fairgrounds across the street, but then he's paying rent, because everything's there.
Yeah, and it's not even that as accessible.
So where Iron Tails has already been approved for food trucks and he has a designated area, would you require Mr. Martinez to come in and redo his designated area? So if he would be operating when Iron Tails is not open, I think was the, the, the original plan, was to go at Iron Tails when they weren't open.
No, I think you'd be better off in the new location for visibility and everything. No one's gonna be pulling into Iron Tails at six AM going all around the back of the building to...
Well, that's, no, 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 that's, he wanted to be in the front of the building.
Yeah, yeah.
Iron Tails is, you obviously know what Iron Tails food truck is. He wanted to be on the complete opposite side.
It's not gonna be very quick to get Iron Tails to update their application.
That's what I'm saying. I was saying, would you require it? That was all. I wasn't saying...
Well, here's a question. How'd Iron Tails get permission for the food truck out there to be used for?
He asked for.
That was it?
It's part of it.
It was part of his original conditions. Or when he came back.
It was written in the...
Okay.
Well, we wanted him to put them out back, so that it wasn't an eyesore from the road if there was... You know, they all got generators and, you know, I feel like...
It was just safe for out back.
Yeah, and with traffic entering and exiting the...
I would not need a generator, um, if that was the case, if, um, if I was out front with him. We're trying to make it so it wasn't an eyesore and it was very easy to enter, I mean...
Right, I'm not saying you're raising an eyesore, I'm saying if you got twelve food trucks lined up along one oh nine, right? With no buffer, that's...
The trailer truck they got down there right now, so...
Right, no, I, um...
No, I was just curious, 'cause...
I don't know if we should, I think we should, we should just kind of ignore Iron Tails in the scenario and ask the consultant about the vacant lot. But that's all, what I would do, 'cause I...
I'm sticking more if he had to pull it out.
Probably get an answer back, by what, Monday, Jason per se, possibly?
If I can, if, yeah, it would be...
Or Tuesday.
I mean, if you get, if you get the email sent to Bob Smith, no, what's it?
Ben Smith.
Ben Smith. Tomorrow, or you might get back to you that day even, because it's just kind of, it's not gonna be that complicated.
I have to reach out to him about something else and I can hopefully get an off-the-record response, so he doesn't charge me.
Yeah, yeah. Right, well, we don't wanna get charged too much for this, because then we have to convey the charges to the applicant, but it certainly would, it would be worth it to him, because it, you know, it's gonna save him.
One more question before we leave tonight.
Free if we use MMA?
No, I think they're cheaper.
What's that?
MMA.
A lot cheaper.
Southern Maine, right?
So that's probably what we should do.
No, it wouldn't be a bad idea. It'd be good to start some sort of communication with Southern Maine anyway. You know, what's seventy-five bucks an hour, it's only gonna take him, what, ten minutes to come up with an answer?
He probably wouldn't have done me for it. I know...
Yeah, yeah, that would be good, so...
Either way, I'll, I'll contact one of them. I have to, I have to talk to Mr. Smith about ongoing stuff, too, so... And I can talk, I can reach out to Lee J. I just talked to their office about those, um...
Books.
Books. Made sure that, uh, that we had enough coming and when were they coming? I didn't get an answer on when, but I got eight books coming.
He's waiting for an answer.
So I guess, we wait for the air from...
Yeah, give me, give me a call, um, next week sometime and, um... I'll have some information for you maybe.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Bye. What do we wanna, I mean, it's a pretty simple question. I mean, I can figure that one out, and I don't need anything crazy, but, uh, just a self-foo, self-contained food truck on a vacant lot, um, that's not defined on our ordinance, how do we go about allowing that? Or can we allow it?
No, we wanna ask him, can he operate before before we, uh, issue him a permit, pretty much?
For, for a permanent facility?
Right, cuz he's already got...
A permanent food truck location or something.
Yeah, permanent food truck location.
Yeah, cuz it, cuz honestly, I think if he did take it with him every night, he probably wouldn't...
It's just a hassle, but...
He's just saying go across the street.
I know, I don't wanna hassle.
No, 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 but if he's looking to get something running, then...
Actually, is how he's...
Parked it in there.
Was he planning on doing this all winter?
No, no.
It's not, so he has travel assistance, he gets to do it.
Temporary seasonal...
It's a seasonal business, absolutely.
But it's, it's not...
His, his money is right now.
Yeah.
After September, it's gonna die down tremendously.
Yeah, he's gonna lose everything if we don't get him off it as well.
I'd just see him get started. I'd really like to help him.
It's that old, 10 days.
Oh, I know, I'm ready.
So he's up on, he's up on Milton Mills.
Yeah, we got to do it, right?
So all we really need to know is what do we need to know?
The guy who left.
About the food truck. Private property.
If we don't have, we have an ordinance, state regulations.
Right, that's true.
Jason, what's that? What do we need to know to allow a food truck to be on private property?
How, how long can a food truck operate on private property without, without needing a permit?
There you go. That, that would tell us just about everything we need, because...
How long can a food truck operate on private property?
Private property.
How much could a wood chun, chun?
Well, that would answer the question, because if they say, well, 30 days, then we...
It might be something that we wanna address at some point, because food trucks are becoming a lot more popular.
Yeah, we put them right in there, and we'll, tiny houses in there.
Well, definitely, that would give us a foothold on where to begin.
After dark.
The ordinance, yep.
They have, like, food trucks.
Yeah, fantastic.
Where?
Down at Coggin's.
Route 1, Wells.
You gotta leave Acton to get there.
Yeah, he's Acton. I've seen him outside Acton. He goes to Springville. I've seen him.
That's how I'd really like to see something like that coming out.
So if you guys didn't... So if you guys didn't know this already, this is Ashley's last night with us.
Oh.
She is relocating to Texas, so I wanted to say thank you.
Yes, we appreciate your business.
Yeah.
Keeping us in track and, and somewhat organized.
Wish you the best.
I wish I had known, I would throw it a party.
There we go. I would've wore a convoy hat.
Yeah.
There you go.
So we will find somebody to, that will replace her at some point.
You can't replace this.
That's true.
Look at that.
One of a kind right here.
Stay in touch.
Yeah. Yeah, like you're a big togo, gonna stop.
Some relatives I got down there, we're gonna...
So, yeah, I think we should, um, probably put it on the agenda to, uh, have elections and determine an executive secretary at the next meeting.
Proud to take over the...
Well, I mean, just on the planning board, executive secretary, like I mentioned.